We'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Albany Public Library Board of Trustees. The first item on the agenda is public comment. If anyone in the public who would like to say something. There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Alright, so we'll move on to new business, which is our goal today is to talk about some of the youth behavior that's been affecting the library, both here and at Town Branch. So I will give it over to Scott, starting with the review of the meetings, the community meetings that happened last Thursday.
So the community meeting on Thursday, which was a partnership between City Hall, Rec Creation Department, and also Buildings and Codes, which was an interesting mix of organizations. I thought was extremely positive. They kind of did it in a more of an information collection in the afternoon. And then the evening there, we kind of processed all of that information. Once we went through it again, I thought they were fairly positive. I would say we probably had about sixty people who participated in both meetings. I did not get, we did not get a head count. So I'll look back to get that head count number. But one of our partners processed the notes this weekend and sent me an email this morning. And you know, we saw two big themes for youth. One is boredom, not knowing where the resources are for them, or having the ability to get to those resources. And then the other was the youth feeling disconnected about what's going on in the city. And we heard this both from adults and from the kids. The kids, in the afternoon session, because media was here, they were not allowed, a lot of them were uncomfortable coming in because they were a camp. So we shared notes out there. The evening group, we actually got a lot more participation from youth. And it was some of the youth that we'd already been speaking to. Things that really stuck out was there was nothing to do, there was nothing to do at home. And they get turned away from existing community centers at certain times of the day. That was definitely part of a longer discussion in our evening group. And there's actually, what was interesting to us was there was a lack of interest by our youth for what's being provided. Some weren't interested in what's out there, but also there were ones who were feeling peer pressure. In other words, they were feeling uncomfortable, and we did observe this here, that they feel uncomfortable about participating in some of the programs because of feeling that, you know, we all were teenagers and sometimes you don't think it's cool to participate in something if somebody else is in the room or if somebody else is in the building. You know, really, the community center became a really big piece of this conversation. I think a lot of members of the community recognize that the library has a very specific role in the community, so we can't take on as many youth as we've been taking on. And also that while the youth would like to see us change our rules, I think most people recognize that it's not really the library's role to change what we do in the community. You know, they're looking for a gym or another computer lab where they can be a little bit louder. And they're definitely looking for after-school programs from Monday through Thursday. It definitely seemed like everybody in the room was invested in making changes that would be positive going forward. Honestly, I thought it was probably one of the better meetings I've attended in Albany, in a leadership role or as a librarian. And you know, I think there definitely will be something very substantive to come out. List of problems was bigger than the list of solutions, which was a little sad. So we're trying to think harder about solutions. We're definitely seeing a little bit of a lack of understanding by adults and parents from where the kids are coming from. We have a staff member who pointed out that the world is a little crazy right now. And this may be affecting how some of our teens are behaving. We're not necessarily looking at the bigger picture. And that's, that's pretty much what we've gotten from the notes so far. We haven't gotten the group together to do a full, you know, full kind of post-meeting. But I thought these notes were really kind of touched on some of the more substantive things that came out of the meeting.
Can you talk a little bit about the format of the meeting? And then maybe the participation from youth? I mean, you mentioned that there was more participation in the evening, but how many kids were actually here?
I would say we had about twelve or fifteen kids who participated. The way people were allowed to provide info, that gave them that amount of time to kind of write their things, post them on a board. And then, you know, they were kind of in and out, which is what teenagers will do. But they definitely added to the conversation.
So what's the format?
I don't know how to describe the format. Basically, we put posters up in this room, and then we put posters up in the larger library for our evening meeting. And people were invited to have conversations with each other and then write down on posted notes, what they thought the problems were, what they thought the solutions were, where they felt they were a part of possible solutions going forward. And this was also tied into Buildings and Codes, an initiative they're doing, which also talked about physical, you know, about buildings, the axes on the buildings and code. Which seemed like a strange partnering, but I actually think it worked well together and facilitated the conversation a little bit more.
Well, I think, Josh doesn't have to comment too, but I just want to point out that that makes sense because the meeting was not originally about the library. It was really a Buildings and Codes city thing coming around, and then it became part of the library. Let's go around the room, and if you want to share any thoughts now or pass, that would be, that would be fine. Is there no next?
So what were some of the proposed solutions that were mentioned? And where were they coming from, the kids?
They were coming from all the kids and the adults. Really, the majority of talk was about space and programming. From what we were hearing from the kids, there was nothing to do. While we heard from the adults, there are things to do. We just need to figure out how to get them in the right direction to go to those things. But also, you know, the youth were pretty clear, like, yeah, you think we want this, but this isn't necessarily what we want. And there were definitely some youth that shared that they were just looking for a space to go and hang out and be themselves.
Was that a comment for the library that there's nowhere to go, or a comment for the students?
That was a comment for the students.
The suggestions that the adults were making for the proposed solutions, places to go, things to do, did that involve the library, or were there other places proposed?
There was other places that were proposed. So there was a lot of conversation about like the Rec Center, which seems to be a big part of this conversation, and how that space has kind of changed. There was talk about, you know, transportation to programs that are, that are going on. But for the most part, the conversation really kind of centered around, you know, something, a space for them to go. And of course, the Recreation Center definitely came up on a handful of occasions. I think most people understand that this is a space that the kids can go. They just, they, anyone who's at that meeting, I think, has been to the branch in the last few months and understands that it's really a volume issue for us.
So what recommendations seem to arise for the library?
I think for the library, it's partnering work with organizations in the city to get some of their programming in our door, which works really well because it kind of gets the kids to kind of, what they've been doing like with boxing here, it gets kids to see, oh, this program exists and it's fun. It's worth walking a few extra blocks to go to this program. Some of the other suggestions that were brought to us is just better training, not just for our staff, but actually staff of all the organizations that we work with. And maybe making sure that that training's done all together. So we talked about trauma-informed training. And we all really thought, you know, instead of having, say, Snug, say Recreation and the library all do separate programs, how do we get all three of those organizations together to train at the same time? Communication was really a big kind of underlying theme there. And that's something I think the library could be better at, but I also think the library could facilitate getting all these groups who do all these things to start talking to each other and having cross-communication.
Were there any specific suggestions for staff?
I think training about how to approach and how to work with teens, especially teens that may be from different backgrounds. And there is definitely, there definitely a conversation about diversification of our staff, which is something that we're working on really hard. And I think we've made some positive changes, but we still need to put...
So I'm gonna note, how many went? How many were able to go to the meeting?
I was at both sessions partially, because I was like in between meetings on both things.
Right, sure. So if anyone who planned has something to add, welcome.
It's a very preliminary conversation.
Yes.
You know, I think the tone is good for, you know, continued, larger-scale conversations and input, but we're talking about not enough resources for the need and for, you know, it's bottom line. So the director of the community center was there, and you know, she has some very compelling reasons why you can't have adults and kids in the same space at the same time.
Well, we do it.
Huh?
We do it.
Not, not in bathrooms and changing rooms.
Yeah.
So you know, we've got, we've got, you know, they've got issues that we can't even begin to address. And those are basic resources. That's not having enough money to do what's necessary. So that, you know, that's, everybody can come up with creative solutions, but you know, there's a, there's a point where if the dollars aren't there, and that, that's, that's going to be our huge, that's going to be a big lift. And I, I mean, I look forward to the library being part of a much bigger solution than just what do we do with kids who are rowdy after school. This is like, this is the case in all of our cities. It's about resources. Where do we choose to put the resources? And we historically don't put them where?
Well, I attended as well, and I spent a lot of time at the Albany Community Center. And just as Alyssa said, resources are, resources being allocated, should I say, to that center, is not nearly enough. They have a lot of issues there. I think it's easy for some folks to say, there's resources in the city, it's about connecting folks. Well, if I live here and I don't have a car, whatever the case may be, I really need something close that I can utilize. It's not about, okay, I can go across town, there's a great program over there. That's not feasible for a lot of people. The other thing that I would like to mention is that I really feel, or it made this happen when I wasn't there or at the other meeting or whatever, but I really feel that APL staff, and I know you mentioned about diversifying staff, educating staff, but I really feel that the APL staff does a great job. And I just wasn't, I wasn't feeling the love, really. I think that could have been stressed more from the time that, at least when I was there. Of course, nothing's perfect, but the time and effort that the staff put in, and also the board trustees, I didn't really feel that that was reflected. And this is not a new problem. Staff has been dealing with this problem, and they still show up for work. So, I wasn't feeling that love, and I just want to let you know. Just, just the overall, just, just overall, to me, the overall environment. And not to put you on the spot, Scott, but even when you spoke and other folks spoke, I didn't hear it. I was listening for it, and that. So I think we have to make sure that that message is out there, that the message come across, regardless to what venue we are in. This problem didn't just start. So we have folks who have been dealing with this for a long time, and they still show up to work, and we still show up to the board meetings, so give our stuff, yeah! That's what we need to do. So we understand the problem, we need to work with other people. But I really, really appreciate coming together, and I really do appreciate having the opportunity for other organizations to work together, from like Alyssa said, it's real resources. Thank you, staff.
Alyssa, could you expand on what you were saying with the community center and the times with kids and adults? Maybe I'm not understanding the situation. Earlier, I thought you were told that right after school was a time for younger kids, and the older kids had a later slot, so they were looking for that time after school. Is there a piece of this with adults as well, with timing and scheduling?
I guess the community center is used by, there's a shelter for men and others. And so they're concerned that they don't have enough staff to monitor changing rooms and all. It's not a, it's, they, they just can't control adults or younger or older kids and younger kids. So that when the younger kids are there, they want to make sure that that is an absolutely safe environment. And they can't control when there are other people in the space, so that, so it can't be shared. And, and that makes me think that the resource, the actual physical space, isn't adequate. You know, that it, and it doesn't sound like it is. There, there's need for a lot more.
And that changed with the school being there. So that added another element. Having that school changed a lot of access, a lot. Which was discussed prior to school being put there, but we were told resources would be put in place to make up for the other issues that may arise that folks from the community brought up, but those resources are not there.
But the center has its own problems because it doesn't seem to have enough resources to pay for staff.
Yeah.
So, one of the concerns when we did a survey from the kids was they couldn't get access at three o'clock. You know, and yet the kids wanted to go straight from school into the, into the, into the community center, and that was not possible.
Because the school was there.
No, no, the school couldn't send, the kids couldn't leave school and go into the community center. The only old kids wanted to go straight from school into the community center, and they couldn't. I guess something caused their scheduling and staffing. And so that seems to be, in addition to having resources for certain things that the kids would like to see, like gaming and other kinds of programs, they don't have it. They don't have sufficient funds to pay for staff to be there. So in addition to scheduling, on the time for adults and children, they don't have the manpower. So, but to the library, what can we do? I mean, we cannot control what they do over there.
Exactly.
But what can we do here, sooner or later, to make it easier for everyone?
So I think, as I pointed out in my memo, is that we've increased staff here. We definitely, we now have someone who's dedicated just to doing teen programs. Today was a really good day. I came at three o'clock, watched the entire operation. Today was a good day. If we can do, if we can operate the way we operated today, with the volume of kids coming in the door, this is perfect. It is, again, you know, we've thrown the resources that we've put towards it. We can always put more resources towards it. It really comes down to the volume of kids that are hanging out here every day. And that's where, you know, we could quadruple our staff, and I think that would help mitigate that issue. But I don't know if that's really the right solution or the right answer.
So where do you think the solution would be?
I'm not, you know, I don't know if this is a library-level solution. I think if we continue forward the way we're doing it, working with community partners, doing as much programming as we can, trying to build relationships with the kids who are coming in the door, I think that'll definitely help move them in the right direction. But I think there are, you know, it's, it's, really comes down to the volume of kids coming in the door.
So the kids live here.
Yeah.
They're going to be here, this is their home. So my question was for the library, do we have an issue of space too? I know you're talking about staff, and you know, the way to accommodate all the children. We need to have more staff, but do we have a problem with space?
I don't think we have a problem with space. I think we use the space really, really well. I think some of the way we've reworked the space in recent weeks has helped with behavior. It's a lot less hanging out by the glass and seeing what's going on in the street. We've worked harder to move kids towards the back of the building, which was the teen, where the teen space was intended. So I think, you know, I think we're moving, I think the library is moving in the right direction of being engaged with kids. Having a little bit more rules to just kind of say, hey, you know, we want you here, you're welcome here. However, these are the things that we need from you when you walk in the door. Having a community engagement perk actually greeting the teens coming in the door has been extremely helpful. However, again, you know, we had, we had, there are a handful of kids, and it's a small amount of kids, that we have not seen them recently because we've been working with the school district and the police department, where their intentions were just to come, because there were such a large amount of kids, were just to come to disrupt. So that's...
And we know who those kids are.
We know who those kids are. It took a little bit of work, we know who those kids are. But today, you know, those kids didn't show up. We probably had, I would say, thirty to forty kids come through the doors, you know, throughout the day. And it was, as I said to the staff, this is how every day here should be.
What did the staff do differently today?
I also want to know kind of why it gets different.
I think it was different because staff, well, we did two things. We had a community department here, we had a program going on, we had a dancing program going on. So we were able to kind of get the kids to move into this space, so they could do the programming to kind of burn off that extra energy. And then we made sure, as the kids came in through the front door, we made sure they understood what the rules were as they walked in the door. And let them know, you know, what part of the library that they need to go to. So I think some of it is just kind of setting ground rules as the kids walk in the door. And that, I think, didn't just, I think we've actually been setting that up for the last three weeks, but it took a little bit of time to get the message across. And Mondays tend to be our high-volume day, and Mondays tend to be the day that is a little, can get a little wild. But it didn't get wild at all.
So I want to break down the issues a little bit. Because when we, when we heard from you at the last meeting, it was really about those disruptive kids, which are, which is causing, you know, huge problems to a lot of the children in the middle. And there is this underlying problem that Brenda raised, is that this constant volume of kids is a challenge. Partly an issue, a city-wide issue. Well, it's a city-wide issue, but then also you need to figure out how to handle that volume of kids until the other issues are fixed. So there's at least two issues. Disruptive kids are seen to be handled for the time being.
It's, I know, in my experience, I mean, I have a lot of experience in this. That's something that comes and goes. And that's something that's really important, to have a good relationship with your community partners. Because there's no other way to really identify, identify that some of these kids, or at least find out who the best person to talk to. Sometimes it's the school district. Sometimes if you can identify someone in the neighborhood that you can have a conversation with, you can find out who their family members are. Sometimes it is, sadly, it is the police. And that's why the neighborhood unit is so important to us. Because we've seen this happen at our Delaware branch, we've seen this happen at our Howe branch. And that's the resource we, we are comfortable with going to when it comes to the Albany Police Department. Because we know we have, it's, we know there's an investment. We're not putting these kids into a system. We have a partner in the community who's willing to kind of go above and beyond, and not just say, hey, you're a bad kid, stop showing up. We want these kids in the library. We just want to find a way to communicate with them what the expectations are.
So I, I think the partnership route is absolutely the way to go. But what was clear to me at the meeting is that, you know, everybody's feeling their way in this. It's not like we're, you know, we actually come out better resourced and with more focused, clear vision about what we're doing. You know, the other groups, I was, I was really impressed with the folks from Snug there. But I think that they're still, they're still implementing, right? They're, they're not quite, they're not quite at full capacity with their programmatic initiative. And then the city, you know, you've got the city, they're doing their thing, and they're, they're beginning to pull stuff together. But, you know, this is, this is, it's co-creating right now. It's not, there's, and the library is a very, very, it's probably the most stable partner of all, of all of that. You know, certainly, city's got whatever resources, but the library, this is what we do. Like, we don't have to like make it up. Like, this is what we do. So I think our approach is really to put as, as much, as much of our resources into being this really open, gracious container partner that can take in that, those other initiatives and organizational expertise to help this issue. Because, you know, people sitting in that space in the back there, they had a different feeling about it. It, this, this library is instrumental in this neighborhood in so many ways. It's a destination, it's beautiful, it's inspirational, we're proud of it. So I, I think that role that we play is, it is precisely our mission that says we are this destination for civic engagement and discussion. And I, I think that role that we played as the consummate host, I think we'll get far if we keep doing that. But I, and I think being parental in some ways, standing there at the door and saying, this is what's expected. And in that conversation, that was the issue that so many community members brought up, was like, you know, we, there's got to be parenting going on here. And that, and what a struggle that is.
Do you not parent when you're at work at three?
I don't think that we should set unrealistic expectations, so I just want to put that out there. So I think the community has a lot of needs, but we also can't be everything to everyone. But I do feel that we should do our best to give the staff the tools that they need to help engage and interact with the youth that we have, because this is our population, and they're coming right now.
I'm, do you, Matt, did you want to say anything after there being at that session?
I feel like it's kind of been said.
So one thing that I want to do is talk a little bit about the, we've come up with a bunch of different ideas for suggestions. Not that we're, because this is the library thing, but, but thinking about, as Brenda said, it's really important to think, and Alyssa too, the library's role in it. Many of us have said that, because this is obviously a bigger issue. So what can we do as the library, in addition to continuing the very beginnings of conversations about it? I'm wondering if we should do that now? Would you want to talk about Howe, or do you want to, how do you want to do that? Do you want to talk about that now?
So, I mean, so the reason why Howe's on the agenda is that I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle, and that there are behavior issues that are similar at Howe. However, they're, they're not the volume, we don't have the middle school. They don't happen at the same time. So, you know, whereas with Arbor Hill, during the week, like last week, I don't think we had one incident report from this branch. So there's some interesting things, you know, that we recognize here, where some of the issues we have are not necessarily from kids who live very close to the library. And we come to that conclusion just based on how different the behavior here is on the weekends and during school breaks. And we also come to that conclusion because working with community partners, we're realizing at this location, we've had teens from Troy, we had teens from multiple neighborhoods, a couple teens from, there's a teen from my neighborhood who's over here hanging out after school. We're still trying to figure out what's attracting them to come in here. So it's interesting to see that dynamic. At Howe, you see similar behavior, not the same volume, however, it's more neighborhood. So actually, when we see the issues there, we do see issues after school. The other issues that we see are actually during the weekend and in the evening. So when the kids are, some of them's done with their program. Where I think Howe has a little... Where I think Howe has a little bit of, how, also because it's kids who are from the neighborhood, there's, we have, that would be easier to find out who parents are and how to get those relationships and how to sit down with parents at the table and have a conversation or with parents or caregivers. And I think the staff have done an excellent job of that. We've also had the neighborhood engagement, the police also help us with getting, I mean, we had, we had a family that was probably responsible for about twenty to twenty-five incident reports. And Rebecca kept coming in the door, and finally Rebecca and her staff did a really good job of reaching out to her neighborhood engagement office. They sat down with the grandmother and we've seen a reduction in the amount of times that these kids, these youth are getting in trouble in our facilities. That's kind of, you know, I just want them to be on the radar, just so that the board understands that this isn't ju, you know, youth behavior issues aren't, isn't just here, and it's different by neighborhood and by branch.
Any other interests I could add, something before we start listing some of the things we already talked about?
I, I just wanna add one last thing, and that is, one of the things that I was reminded of and I am, I think of often is that in some ways it's developmentally appropriate. These are, these are kids who at this age are, they're obnoxious, and they're just obnoxious on so many levels, and it is their job to test the authority. And so, and, and in some ironic way, we're the focus of that. And, and there was some conversation at that meeting that, you know, do we, because of the color of their skin predominantly, are we making other kinds of judgments about it more severely? And that, and I, I know that we're aware of that, and I wanna be, continue for us to be aware of issues of skin color in this conversation. So, you know, I, no, do we put up with it? No, but do we understand it developmentally? I think we need to give that a little bit more.
Right, and I think that that ties in with what Scott and Brenda said about the need for trauma-informed training and training relationships with developmental, developmental.
Yeah, but I think understanding adolescents, and I'm not saying the staff don't, but, you know, it's like middle school kids and high school kids, they have this thing where they want to be independent and they are challenging leadership and all that, but at the same time, they aren't controlled. You know, they feel safe when you have rules and expectations, at the same time respecting them and listening to them and giving them things that speak to their needs. And so I really liked how they were included in the conversation, you know? I've heard young people say that nobody ever asked them what they think or how they feel. And when I was reading the post-its that they were putting in place about what could be done to improve the neighborhood, you know, or dealing with vacant buildings and all that stuff, I mean, it were quite, you know, they were, you know, it was like, they talked about beautification, they had ideas about what could be done to make things better. So I think to the extent that we could build on a high low, high low, that we can set the expectations like staff have already started, and we do the cross-training, I think that that will help a lot. And I would just like to, to mention that Councilman Robinson, who is here, was also a representative Metropolitan Baptist Church, he is aware of it. And when I spoke with Pastor Johnson, he was gonna be away, he asked Councilman Robinson, who also happens to be a minister, to be involved on behalf of the church. So there is an additional layer of resources that can be available. And so if we can, you know, as we're looking at partnering, have some additional ideas about things the partners can do, that could be, you know, that could be helpful. Point Dexter.
He and I are meeting, we have scheduled our meeting already, so.
Excellent.
Definitely, thank you, you've caught, put me in contact, put multiple members in the clergy, so we're reaching out to them and trying to facilitate a relationship.
Excellent, because then we can also get to some of those other social issues. And I know that we can't be all things to everybody, but if we create that knowledge with everybody having eyeballs on the children, like in the old days, it wasn't too much you could do about somebody seeing what you did. And we having conversations, but letting people know that they were cared about and people were concerned, and if everybody's chipping in and providing some kind of a support, and we're doing it in a coordinated way, I think it would be, it would be helpful. Some of the field trips that we're doing out of Metropolitan, if we could include the children, you know, from the neighborhood or living near the library, to go on some of those field trips, then, you know, you're adding an additional resource.
All right, so I just, I just wanna mention one more thing, is that one other thing that took place was Jonathan's assistant, I'm trying to think her name, it just escaped me right now, she's the.
Donna.
Donna. Oh, no, no.
No, her name's not Donna, it's Ava. She works in the office, I can't think of her name, but.
Ava.
Anyway, I'm talking about Jonathan Jones' assistant, working in the office, okay? But she stood out front and she, she engaged a lot of the youth, and she was calling them in, and they even had discussions outside, and she related very well to the youth as well. And she kind of hyped some of them up, go ahead, tell what you think, and stuff like that. And she got them all excited and I used to come in here. And I thought that was a good, a good outlook too, the outreach that she did out there and really engaged them. And it was really nice, I sat out there with her for quite a while, talking to her, and the children really related to her, and that was really good.
They were here today, they've been here most, most days after school. And they've actually helped get some of our kids to come into the programs that we're doing and participate.
No, don't be, please, I'm sorry, I have to say, and I'm just really pleased that at least we've made some steps in the direction of listening, engaging the youth directly and listening to them. And the, they're here every day, I wonder if there's opportunities to continue that conversation, continue, you know, engaging and listening, because how, we can't have solutions without them. Whether it's library-wise, you know, just library piece with a bigger community piece, I think that's so, so important.
Maybe we could structure the time for the kids on a regular basis, where they come together and they talk about stuff. You know, talk about what is happening here, or, and give ideas and pray, and we could like.
We did have a program that was facilitated, I can't remember what the group was, but it was called Real Talk. And that was a really good group, have they been meeting recently?
No, they felt that there were other communities that had greater need and stopped coming here.
Okay, then we need to look into a program like that again.
There are some, there are some programs about that, but I think that's, that's exciting to think about. So let's just start writing down.
That was a good, it's a good group, some conversations, some of us.
So, we talked a little bit about staff training, different little markers.
So it sounds like it's dying.
What's that? No, it's fine, it's cool. And then that's trauma-informed. Cultural response.
What about training with partners?
Okay, we have the class.
I'm gonna put cultural competence first.
Okay. Cultural competence, and then adolescent, but there's something about.
Developmental.
Yeah. Mentally appropriate. All right, so, so that was one thing I heard. Last thing I heard was engaging youth, saying them now because I'm really excited about it. In problem-solving, it's not, you know, there's lots, obviously, there's lots of engagement of youth going on here with the staff and programming and stuff, but they're engaging them in problem-solving. And I'm just gonna say Real Talk, whatever that was. What did you say, I mean, the, engaging them about what's going on in the library and community?
I mean, like, there's probably already a suggestion, but maybe there could be other things.
Great, I can see that, okay. Anything else around engaging them in problem-solving?
I, I think you need to ask them what their issues are and give them a opportunity to start working on some of them. They've got real solutions to these things, they know what needs to happen, and we don't ever really provide them with that opportunity to dive in, and, and we're, you know, fairly well-resourced here, and we're at the library, we know how to find out how to do stuff. So, you know, maybe, maybe that's, that's the thing, there are communities around us. Schenectady has had a youth summit for two years where they've invited four hundred middle school and high school students to really dive into what are the issues that affect them and how might they solve them? And they've actually engaged the Schenectady Community Foundation in funding some of their solutions. And many of them are lean, are about beautification of their neighborhood, because they know.
They care about stuff like that.
They do, they wanna see beauty just like everybody else.
Who organizes the youth's summer?
It's out of the Schenectady Community Foundation, his name is Bob Crowe, and I'm happy to put you in contact with him. And just as a little aside, I facilitated that meeting twice. It's a pretty remarkable experience to see these kids. And when you think about what youth are organizing on a national level, when they have the opportunity and are resourced by adults who can get them transportation and feed them and pay their cellphone bills, you know, they're organizing.
So, and I'll just add to this, then the, they're already here, so this is a good place to have that.
Yeah, we don't have to go and find them.
Okay, so let me talk a bit about partnerships. So a little bit of that, moving up Brenda is, we do, keep doing what we're doing, right? There's, there's a lot of good work already happening. But there was a few good ideas that I heard, but now my memory's gonna start to fail, so.
Snug's a big, Snug's a big one.
Right.
And they even, their members there even identified people in the community who could teach photography and, and, and things that kids were really interested in. There was a discussion about how everything falls into sports for boys and, you know, beauty and dance for girls. And like how that is old news, very old.
That's why we have a health camp, the Coalition does, because you do different things.
That's it. So more than sports, I think that's important, that's always. All right, so the, so the key about partnerships that I, that I wanted to make, that I couldn't even say, is that there's a real opportunity to help us with unique programs.
Right, so we came to Field Branches with the kids. I shared with Scott that the church is looking to organize S and T classes. And so we can bring that here to the library, opening up to the children in the community as free. And also engaging the college students and.
Did you guys do anything for the library?
Sure, we have to ask.
I don't recall.
When it's finding.
Washington, I was just wondering.
Yeah, it's finding the community partners that are able to facilitate this work, is why sometimes things come and go.
So I didn't get great for the church.
I also liked the idea of the law school and the mentors that we talked about.
Again, mentors from, like, yeah, progress schools, students who are like the first one to go to college. Just to discuss how they did it, because it's hard.
Okay, so helping with partnerships, we mentioned a few different ones, but the helping with unique programs, bringing new different things, more than sports for boys and beauty and dance for girls, and then there could be some mentoring, yes, sir.
And going back to asking the kids what they want.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
It's okay, you don't have to ask.
Well, and, because if it's, I mean, just for someone with a fifteen-year-old at home, if it's your idea, they don't like it? Even if they would've wanted to do it, it has to come from them.
So one of the comments Scott had earlier was, sometimes they don't know the programs or what's going on. So I know we have our bi-monthly program that we do for all of the branches. I was wondering if there's some way or one of these organizations that can kind of put out a full, a kind of a program for what's going on with all of our organizations, and maybe it can be posted at the school, so the kids know on these areas.
There is, there is a department in the city that's working on that right now. And that was a part of this, some, some of these things have been happening, we don't want them to happen, but sometimes when you have issues like this, it starts to bring people at the table who are working on different things and then figuring out what the resources are. So I know one of the people who were involved in this, Eva, she is working on something like that.
So one of the issues that I just mentioned, that you had mentioned about kids coming from other communities, wasn't that happening? I don't know what to do about that, because they're not just doing it here. It was a big problem when we were at the high school, where kids were coming from Troy to fight, and grownups were winning them, you know, and they were filming them, it was crazy. So what can we do with those kids? How do we, I suppose we can, to, 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 to.
So, yeah, so I think most of what we've talked about here is kind of lots of kids libraries-centered. But then there's the very disruptive kids, like they're from Troy or other places. I think that's, there's like, there's different solutions there. And so, like, other places, and that's where it seems like you need, that's where it's really important to have the partners to help identify who the kids are. And it seems like there should be, what's really exciting, like Melissa was mentioning, is that this is the beginning of a conversation. That we're kind of understanding that we need to talk to each other about this, and maybe we can create pathways of communication. Okay, there's a super disruptive kid, I'm calling, staff know who to call in the organization to get what they need. I don't know what, I don't know what it is, but that there's some kind of roadmap to figure that out.
And I would say in the past, you know, when we had this issue with Delaware, and when we had this issue in the past at Howe, we, those lines were clearer, and in recent years, those lines aren't as clear as they once were. So we kind of scrambled to say, who do we talk to to help us identify these kids so we can figure out a way to have a conversation with someone about their need.
So that's something we had in the past, but something we need to make sure that we constantly can know.
Yes, and the players change, and the people, the, the rules sometimes change a little bit on us. And so it's, that's something that we struggle.
What do you mean?
Sometimes our community partners are very, sometimes people aren't in the same position they were a year ago. Sometimes there are new people in positions and they're not as comfortable working with us for one reason or another. So, you know, we, we used to have a very good line of communication with the school district, and that solved a lot of our issues. And that in recent years hasn't been as clear, so now we're working on, kind of working on re-establishing that relationship.
But I, I, I think to deal with disruptive behavior and the, the really disruptive ones, we have to be very clear about, you know, th, this is a disciplinary issue, we, it's a safety issue and we say no. And if we have to close the library because things got way out of hand or unsafe, then we do that. That's the very disruptive. But my feeling about the whole situation is that there are some very disruptive kids, but for the most part, they're completely aged appropriate and they're just hooking into this, you know, we're all this, doing this thing. So our, I think, our. So our, I think, our, where we're, we can be skillful is in the larger group. We, we don't, we're not police, we're not, uh, the school, we're not parents. But we can set those rules. And so, so I, I wanna be clear, I, I think we need to, as an organization, be clear on what our rules are for dealing with this. And then the communication is not so much about the disruptive ones. Yes, we need to know who we contact, but it's much, the communication has more to do with how do kids know that we actually have things going on? And they say across the board that adults are speaking in places that kids never enter. You know, all the communication, it's not going on on Facebook, people. It's not going on, uh, even on Instagram. It's going on things I don't even know what the name is. So every time we think we're cool, they're someplace else and sharing information. So, they need to, they need to design an app, uh, and communication strategy. Because once they get something out, it goes viral. And we don't, you know, as much as we love Stephanie and your, you know, acumen there, it, it's, we're behind the eight ball on communication, absolutely.
One place where we've been successful with that is getting into the schools and doing school visits and getting them to know us. Um, that's something that we need to work on programmatically with the district to make sure we're getting into every school. Um, I know we've talked about getting into the middle school, it's not been as easy as we thought it was, would be. And that, to me, is where we've solved issues in the past, that once you're in the school a few times, the kids get to know you, they get to know about your program, your programs, they tell their friends about your programs. I don't think our staff have visited the middle school this year.
They have. They have approached, the, the staff at the middle school in normal times have attempted to get in. Um, but the staff over there is so busy and so overwhelmed that it's just not been possible. I know John, um, and Alex have tried very hard to schedule business.
Um, I appreciate your point, Alyssa, and I, I brought some of those down. But I think, I think it's important to talk about this because some of the more, um, drastic things that we, that might need to be done for safety is something that we wanna make, I, I, Scott has asked and I also like to make sure the board kind of knows what the potential of things could happen on. And there's kind of general agreement that, okay, if it gets to this point, yes, do this. If it gets to that point, okay, do that, um, because we need to protect staff and, and the kids.
But also banning is not always a solution. Because when new black kids come in and stuff, they are still in the area doing stuff. That's not really good. So, I think that those kids need to be identified and, and engaged in some way, in a positive way. And I, I don't know what all the answers are, because I don't know, for every child, it could be a completely different story and a different solution. But they need to be, um, you know, identified and brought in, um, and engaged in a positive way so that we can redirect them or cure the crazy behavior that they are, um, sharing with us.
Some rumors, like the banning.
Yeah, no, I mean, you put them out there and then they're standing on the corner doing stuff, you know? It's not good.
Well, just as a follow-on to that, um, this is the place where, it's, as someone who works with adolescents, I, it's so hard to get your head around, but I actually was a little bit disruptive at that age. More so than I am now. And, um, you know, just speaking from a personal standpoint, it, it actually comes from a place of pain. I don't know if it requires trauma-informed care, but it's, uh, it's kind of a combination of rage and pain. So, if your goal in life is to disrupt things, that's how Green says, you're not going to be in the library, you will be disrupting them across the street from the library. So, uh, but I, I don't know if the library is a, like, however you engage me, if it hasn't been my choice, when I was in that state, I was just going to kick it my base, either metaphorically or attempt to do it physically. So, um, and I think this idea that we can be the answer for someone who's in that really extreme space, we have to really think about that.
Right, and because also. You may not be able to.
Alyssa was saying.
Cause I heard the word cure and I'm like, uh, I don't think the library can do that.
No, but sometimes with someone people, you can turn it around. And there's some people who can't, because what is happening with them is beyond the scope of anybody in this world.
I mean, in my, I, in my case, it just had to kind of pull him out. Like, I didn't start college until twenty-five and there's a reason for that. So, it had to, it had to do its thing.
One of the things that I haven't seen, I've been here a lot, when, um, misconduct was at high levels, right? And one thing that I haven't seen, any type of debriefing or any type of huddle for the staff or for the young people who are in the library experience and the police and the fighting and all that. I would like to see some, some type of engagement in that area. So, we have a big blow-up out there and then after the police come or whatever, do whatever, and it quiets down and we go along business as usual. So, I'd like to see some type of, things happening on both sides for the youth that are in there. Witnessing this and also for the staff.
Can you talk about the debriefing with staff?
So, we have been talking about team, um, uh, team-informed, um, direction that we take with this. We've started to do it before school gets out, whereas before we kind of operated as normal. School got out and then there was, things got chaotic. We now are following a model that we saw that other, at other branches that was successful, where our branch manager will pull everyone and say, hey, it's Monday, three o'clock's coming around the corner. These are some kids that we need to have a conversation with. Um, but I do like the idea of debriefing at the end of an incident, so we're gonna talk about that.
I like doing it with youth too.
And involving the youth, it might be a, a good thing to do, just to kind of point out, this is the negative behavior, this is why this. I think staff do do it on kind of a one-on-one. I don't think we huddle. And I'm interested to see what a huddling type of scenario, whether or not that will, the benefit that'll come from that. Cause then maybe they'll be, you know, there's a lot of talk of peer pressure. Maybe we can use peer pressure for positive, to be a positive influence as opposed to a negative influence.
And also to identify too, some of the additional ways these kids are experiencing. Some kids are frightened and they don't feel safe. And so, for, for a young person to be able to say to the group, I'm not comfortable, I don't feel safe, I think, and it's self, of itself can be empowering, you know, you're not alone. And then thinking about, okay, how am I gonna do this?
So, we talked about some of the, mostly, I think, Matthew, what I'm hearing so far and what I'm thinking is that very disruptive is not solving those kids' problems, because it's beyond the scope of what we can do. But thinking about what, what needs to happen and, and what are the, what are the drastic measures the library might have to take? So, one thing that Scott spoke about is, um, that some days the, the doors are closed and kids are locked in one by one. Did that happen today too?
That didn't happen today. Today was actually the day where, um, Will, who's a librarian, and Ray, who's one of our C E Cs, they didn't need to lock the door that day. It was more of a greeting kids. And then as around four o'clock came around, they were actually comfortable with just having one person at the front, just to kind of monitor kids and remind them about behavior as they came in the door. And I thought that was very positive.
Um, so, some of the more drastic things are closing the library after school. If things get bad, just shutting, shutting it right down. Do you wanna talk about some of the other things that are, on the drastic end, we're acknowledging or the drastic.
So I would say the, the closing after school is definitely drastic and not something that I'm advocating for, but it's definitely something that the board should at least know is in discussion. Um, this was actually suggested last week by a police officer. Yes, again, it's a terrible idea. I'm pointing it at all these scenarios, all the scenarios are at the table. Another scenario that was suggested to us was to change our pol- youth behavior policy and that you have to be accompanied by an adult to come into the building. I know it's all, these are all terrible scenarios, but it's my job to share terrible and good. Um, so, you know, that's the other scenario that we've discussed. Um, the, you know, tho- those are the two kind of, as I call, nuclear options, um, that I think, I don't wanna ever see used, but at the same time, there are definitely days that I've been here where I can understand why that's a really attractive option.
I, 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 I'm really hoping to find a way to make it. Because the thing is, is that if you close a library, then where are the kids gonna go? So all that's just gonna go into the streets and other places and that's not gonna be good for anybody. Plus, there's no safety for the, for the other kids who are innocent. Plus, you have adults who use the services here, who, who, who leave the facilities for a whole bunch of personal and professional reasons. And if you close a library, then you're also shutting off access to them.
And, but an argument can also be made that right now adults aren't coming in the building after three o'clock because they are concerned. And I was here the other day where, and, um, Angel didn't wanna share it with me, but he thought it was important for me to hear. We had had parents call to say, hey, is it safe over there today? I wanna see my child over. So that's the point we've reached with safety, and I'm sorry, my staff's safety is a concern and patron's safety is a concern for me.
I understand, I, you know, I think that we all agree that safety is important. Safety of everyone is important.
But I want the board to understand that we have reached a point, sometimes with some situations here after school, that that's on our mind, because we've reached that point where it's just forty kids in front of the building.
So, what would be an alternative?
I think what the staff are currently doing is the best possible alternative. I do believe that it could be working, but like anything, you try and if something doesn't work, then you have to go back to the drawing board. So I just want the board to understand that that's something that's been brought up in the past and that's something that we might bring to the board again.
Do you, um, so I'm wondering, do you have a social partner or is that how it is that you're working here?
And Annie has been here. She's made multiple observations about what's going on, how the library and the staff can change approach. I think she's made suggestions that the staff have followed. So she is engaged as well. I mean, this isn't all hands on board. I've pretty much been here every day after school for the last three weeks. Mary's here pretty much every day after school. Um, this has been an all-hands-on-deck. We've put tremendous amount of administrative, administrative effort into this.
So when you, what event would cause you to exercise the nuclear option of closing the building?
If we feel either there are enough disruptive youth in the building that aren't listening to adult staff at all, that would be one option. Another option, if one of our community partners shared with us that something's going on that we need to be concerned with, or the staff member or a member that was assaulted.
Do you, um, so is this a point where you would pull the police or you just let the kids in?
I would say that we would definitely pull the police if it would reach that level. But as I outlined in my memo, sometimes police response is two minutes. Other times, police response is no response at all. So that's been a real frustration for us. There are days like today where the police aren't in the building at all, because the neighborhood engagement unit officer is off on Mondays. So today, there was no neighborhood engagement officer. Pierce is on vacation, Jones is off on Mondays. So, there are, and so then we're regulated to, um, calling dispatch, calling the non-emergency number or nine-one-one and sometimes we get a great response. We had one day where a car showed up, there were new officers, they were really engaged, they were really interested in talking to the kids. They walked through. Other days, we get officers who show up, they kind of disperse everybody, they don't collect any names, and then they go on to their next call.
Do you wonder what helped you? What, what, what would help you, what kind of a, um, so you, do you think that coordination with the police department would help the situation?
So, one of the other options that I've talked about with Karen, and I think, I'm not sure if Brenda and I had a conversation, I know I've talked with other board members about is, in my conversation with the chief of police, there was opened up the idea of paying police officers overtime for being in the building. This is not something unusual for libraries. Actually, the majority of the city libraries that you go to, there are police there. I'm not sure if that's the option either.
I think the police are gonna say, well, you know, answer, I'm saying to Mary and my children, she was here to, you know, to come up with. You have to be creative using the departments that we have. The police sends a array of issues, a lot of issues. So, I think we need to find some better solution. Although I do raise something that's out of hand, maybe they'll call the police, but that's not gonna be the answer to our eels in this particular situation.
Our relationship with Snug has been really, really helpful. However, their resource.
Yeah, they're thin, so.
Yeah, they're a thin resource, so they're not busy.
It's not gonna be one person, one answer. We're all gonna just put this group right here and they gotta fix our problems.
I love your idea of working with churches, cause churches have their creation areas. Churches have spaces that are gonna be really.
Just let Matthew just hand up a while.
I'm so sorry.
What do you want to say?
Well, um, I've, I've been interested in this, thank you, Karen. I've been interested in this piece of the memo where it says the staff have been locking the doors at three and then letting people in one by one. But then you mentioned today, they decided not to do it that way.
So we do it when the volume becomes high. So in other words, if they're, um, if we had to pass some kids the need for behavior and then they're kind of, they're not dispersing, that's typically when we move to that model. Or when we recognize that we have some kids on our list who are the more disruptive kids and they're hanging out in front of the building, that's typically when we do that as well.
Um, so, my concern is, you know, working with teens is that I feel like the system kind of has to always work the same way. It has to be consistent. Because if it's like, oh, today, it was really cool and we were just waving at the door. Oh, well, guess what's gonna happen tomorrow? You kind of have to be like, whatever it is, it's always gotta be that. Just because kids need to know what they're going to expect.
And, and they're looking, you know, we're, we are, we are, are good sitting duck targets, because we're nice. We don't wanna throw them out. We don't want, you know, they, they're, they're interested in us. They're interested in the response that they're getting from staff. And we're engaging them in this, you know, quasi, like, you know, I, I think you gotta shut that down. And, and they have to know, like, okay, you cross that line and that, that's the consequence, the doors close. And yes, they're gonna be on the outside and they're gonna be disruptive someplace else, but more likely, you, you've, they're less interested in us. They're not, we're not engaging them. I mean, middle schoolers are obnoxious to people. You know, they're not obnoxious to themselves, they're obnoxious to people. And they, they, they're, they wanna get our goat. They, they just wanna know that, like, they can get us. So if, if we're trying to, like, keep, keep engaging them, that's why I, I, I feel comfortable as a board member knowing how, how involved we are in this conversation, how committed we are in finding these partners, strengthening these partners, doing this programming. I feel like we're, we're on a really good track here. But if we have to close the doors to keep our staff and patrons safe, absolutely. And, and we'll open it again. Like, you know, once the, you know, it's clear. I, I, I. And we'll open it again. Like, you know, once the, you know, it's clear. I, I, I.
I think that, I hear you to say it, and it's, and the challenge is, how do you not perpetually escalate a sense of fear again? So if we close the building because terrible things are happening here and people are afraid, would I want my child to come here? Would I come here at all if I needed to do some research? I wouldn't. I would avoid this place like everything. So sometimes what seems, you know, I think to, to, our savings would be, to the extent that we can engage everybody in a positive way on a higher level. You know, deal with the individuals that we have to deal with and engage partners in creative ways. But if our young people, the majority of our young people claim this space as their own, and we get them thinking on a higher level about what, who they are and what they need to the community, and why this library is a treasure to a soul, then behaviors will change. As we introduce higher-level activities to the kids and we have expectations for them, then it'll be easier for everyone to be in here. It will not be a difficulty for adults to be in doing what they need to do. Because our young people will learn to be respectful of it, because they're being respectful and they're engaged. And we decision our processes and solutions will be. I think we could have a completely different atmosphere. And as we bring in other resources, we think about what resources the library needs. Because when you're talking about hiring additional staff, that costs money, you know? When we talk about bringing in additional programming, that costs money. So maybe there may even need to look at other resources that can help to make that happen. In addition to what partners may be able to winterfall. So, but I think that closing the building and not understanding why we consider it may not get you the result that you're hoping for.
No, I don't think, so for us, the idea of closing the building isn't, isn't the only result we're looking for from it is from a safety perspective.
No, I got that.
Yeah, and I just want the board to know that that's, that is not an idea I ever entertain. And I want you to at least know that it's on my mind.
I got you. Matt, you weren't the only one that was kind of hard to be with when you were in school?
Oh, no.
I confess. I have teachers that you would find them, they would tell you stories, right? So I'll tell you, when we had, when I was in the seventh grade, we had, in the social studies class, we got rid of five teachers, took pride in it. Before we kept one that we wanted. You know, we literally drove them out of our building. I don't know if they left the professor or not. They were no longer troubling our nerves, right? But at the same time, at the very same time, we had teachers that we didn't do that with. You know, when we go into our science class, Miss Evans, who we were, how we were supposed to be, we were stupid. She was prepared. She knew how to deal with us. She knew how to throw the eyeballs on you and stop you in your tracks without raising her voice, you know what I'm saying? But it was, it was just, you know, there were people who we had to manage us and folk who didn't. We're at our mercy, and we have fun.
Yeah, I think, Arlene, you're really on to something, because when you talk about partnerships, it's not only partnerships, it's leaders, people who kids will respond to and react to. And I know in this branch, we had a staff member for several years who, you know, sat at the front desk and, you know, made people unhappy sometimes, because she was pretty fierce. And she kept, you know, she kept some control here. And I, I do think that in thinking about partnership, we also have to think about strengths of certain individuals, whether they're community members, whether they're staff.
Well, I will say, we have retooled this branch a little bit. The brandons and staff who have experienced, the branch manager here was here as a library assistant, and she came back as a branch manager. She's comfortable. She's been working very, very hard to build those relationships back up. So I do want to say that the majority of the staff here.
I know.
Yeah, are very, are, the kids are responsive to, and I think they're trying their best to create those relationships and not be, I'm just here to be an adult. I'm going to have to go.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that. Staff criticize and staff, but I think the cross-training will be helpful. And I, I think that there's some tools that we all can use and learn about how to escalate situations and how to engage people who normally would be the ones you'd like to put in a box, but have them come in, have those kids to be your partners. And then also, I think, I think it's going to be important, too, is how we work with the parents, because I've seen parents escalate things and become engaged inappropriately. So it's about knowing, it's about having a bunch of tools and techniques and, you know, to pull on. And I think that all of that would be helpful. And that could be a criticism, because I've seen, you know, our staff here, and I view them as being very careful, caring and supportive, and, but sometimes we need a little bit more.
Training and support.
So I want to, I want to wrap it up. I want to give everybody an opportunity to say something brief, more if they want to. But I want to add, you know, Arlene, you said the tools that they need, and you mentioned additional staff, additional funds. And so I encourage you, Scott, and your staff, to think about what else you might need from the board to ask, whether it's lots of other people or, when we think about the programming, we talk a lot about bringing in partners to do programming and talking about how strapped these community partners are for learning. Are we paying them for their programming?
So we have had a conversation about, we have had a conversation about bringing some of these partners in and actually paying for them to facilitate their programs, because that's what they say, unless they go, I don't have the person to do this.
Right.
I don't have a person to be here to do boxing every day. So that is the conversation that we've been having with these partners, you know?
And then, of course, you can come to us if there's a significant amount that you want.
And the reason why I wanted to have this meeting was just to let the board know that this is how serious these issues have become, that they need to be at a board level. But what's been beneficial is, I know many of you have reached out to church leaders or leaders in the city or the school district, and talking to other boards and community leaders have definitely brought people to the table in a much more substantive manner because of those conversations. So that's definitely appreciated.
Does anyone want to add some last thoughts? I don't, Andy, you. No, I wasn't trying to call you out. I just wanted you to opportunity to say something.
No, everything I'm hearing is, is, is right on. It's a difficult problem to experience in the past and successful with, but it's obviously harder this time. It's probably much, much harder. So we have to stretch and find new ways to do it.
So I want to give, I'm just, if you have last words, an opportunity to say something before I wrap it up.
Can I just bring up a point that we discussed?
Oh, yeah.
The police and staff have suggested that we remove the quarter wall that's out front. That has become kind of a hangout spot for individuals, some of whom coming in the library. Some of them not. We'd like to replace it with shrubbery and trees, not just get rid of it, but make it nicer. That is not something that the board needs to vote on, but I want to make sure that there's, you know, not severe board opposition to change to the physical structure on that. Yes?
Okay, why?
Because that's a really good spot for people to hang out and be seen. And it tends to kind of generate the kids hanging out. They start, they kind of clump around that wall. So, and I think it would actually be nicer to have shrubs in the tree there.
You can't sit on a shrub?
No.
And you can sit on it, it'll go off.
Let's see what you're thinking. You're thinking something.
Well, it's a, it's a stunning conversation, right? Are you thinking about taking it?
Yeah.
Is there something that you can discuss with Facilities Committee?
I think the Facilities Committee will have a meeting about it.
And you want the Facilities Committee to come?
It's conversation.
Do you want to add anything else, or?
No, I'm listening.
Okay, nice. No, you're good. All right, Melissa. All right, Sarah. All right. Thanks, Emily. I really, really appreciate you taking some, a night off, or a personal committee, actually, a night off.
We have a new meeting.
I'm here to talk about this and being so engaged in the conversation. I really, I really appreciate that. I also want to, for Brenda said in the beginning, and just thanks so much to staff and Scott for handling this issue with such grace and trying to do the best you can and making changes on the fly. I mean, it's really impressive. I can't imagine how stressful this is for you all to deal with every day. And I just want to appreciate that, that work you're doing and pursuing. So I guess with that, I'm supposed to ask for a public comment. I feel like I was ready to go. Any public comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jenna. Thank you. All in favor?